Just to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Now, moment of silent reflection, please, for all the emergency responders. Thank you, please, Allison.
Karlovic?
Here.
Reichner?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Brochus?
Here.
Ister?
Here.
All right, in this, so the, um, everybody is aware, I am being extra precautious, um, I was exposed possibly to a COVID-19 last week. I didn't go get my test today, but just so everybody is aware, I built names in self-cordial, we're extra cautious about in our, uh, elected officials here at the board. So as of October 19th, um, the CDC data, or departments, I'm just providing this quick little update for everyone. If you are exposed to COVID-19, you're supposed to quarantine if you have been in close contact within six feet of someone for cumulative, total of 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period. With someone who has COVID-19, unless they have been fully vaccinated, people who are fully vaccinated do not need to quarantine after contact with someone who had COVID-19 unless they have symptoms. However, fully vaccinated people should be tested five to seven days after their exposure, even if they don't have symptoms, and wear masks indoors in public for 14 days following the exposure or until their test is, uh, negative. So let's just quick little update, so move in on, is there any public comments on agenda items only at this time?
We have one.
Okay, if you can stand, state your name, and if you're a resident of Sundbury, for municipality residency, please.
My name is Jody Otter. I am a resident of the city of Sundbury, Fifth Ward. And I have comments on a couple of agenda items. Uh, first, I wanted to note on the, um, city administrator and city clerk ordinances. Um, I see that on the job descriptions, you have them assigned. It says their job title and that their department is executive, but that should be, to my knowledge, Public Affairs Department. Was there some reason it was made executive? Because there is no executive department.
Honestly, I assume there is an executive department. So can you tell me something I don't know?
So, yeah, it's in the Article 1 executive departments, but it lists out the Department of Public Affairs and all departments in that the city clerk and all other personnel that are not assigned to a different department are assigned to Department of Public Affairs.
So at least they want to. But that falls under the executive department direction or something?
Yeah, executive departments includes Department of Public Affairs, Department of Public Utilities, so those are the departments that exist. They are in total the executive departments.
Understood.
Okay. And then on the, um, discussion previously regarding the wages, I do, uh, just want to state my concerns as a citizen, a resident, and taxpayer, um, to make sure that these are sustainable. And I do, you know, based on the discussion that you've had, I think you, you recognize that revenues have decreased by about $100,000 every year for the past several years. And unless you can say that, you know, there's something that causes you to anticipate there might be an increase in revenues, I would just make, want the council to exercise caution. Because when you establish wages, you're establishing a must-pay bill and your discretionary, uh, funds decrease. So, and as, uh, Councilman Reichner had pointed out, you know, if your costs are going up and your revenues are going down, that point at which they cross, uh, will cause you to move into a deficit and you'll have to take action, whether that is to lay off employees or take some other measures, take away services in order to balance a budget. So I would just urge the council to exercise caution. And also, I would hope that, uh, that this would be in conjunction with, now, you may, you may pass the budget this year with it in it, but there does need to be a review of the manpower and organization of the city across the board. And I believe, you know, Steve Welker is the supervisor of the Streets Department, um, he's done this review in his department, and I think it should be done across the board, where you establish exactly what full-time positions you have, what their job descriptions are, what their skill levels are, and also part-time, you also need to know, um, you, it is predictable, it should be predictable, how many seasonal employees you will bring on each year. And the more that you can be precise in those things, the better you will be at being able to predict and control that wages and benefits, uh, in your, in your budget. And also, in the, for the budget in general, I hope, and, um, I know there was a stamp recommendation for you to use the tool. And so that can help you make this decision as well. You can plug in different variables, and you can plug in the wages at $15 an hour, you can plug them in at $13.50 an hour. You can make assumptions about what you think the, your, um, uh, the rate of inflation is going to be, what your rate of your, your medical benefits, those changes. You can put those in as predictors and, and use that tool to help you project whether or not your budget that you're setting the present or now is going to be sustainable over time or where it will be that you're going to need to take some action. So those are my comments on those budget, on those agenda items, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, Reichner, any other public comments on agenda items only?
One other, one more.
You may please stand and announce your name and municipality of residence.
I'm from Sundbury, and I'm concerned about the Raid Street project. I'd like to get a copy of the contract with KMR Charles. I can study it and see if they're doing what they're supposed to do and the manager's supposed to do it. It's getting ridiculous. Now, they were joking around Sundbury as, yeah, it's supposed to be done by the middle of the month, but then they'll tell you what year. So it's, it's, you can't walk in the sidewalk. They have materials stored in sidewalk. I don't know if it's late more than that. That's why I'd like a copy of the contract to see if they're doing what they're supposed to do, the way it's supposed to be done. Uh, it's not detailed wage at all.
Mr. Bub, I just want to add to that. The slowdown right now is materials, as we all know, you can't get materials.
We said at the beginning that they're supposed to have materials on hand before they start, that was ignored.
No, that's not true.
That's impossible.
No, it's not possible, that's true. Once the contract was led, the materials were ordered, Mr. Bub. And right now, you can't get anything in precast materials. Uh, just got some casting came in, uh, last Thursday, I believe it was, the manholes and so forth. Can't get pipe. You check in the industry right now, you can't get corrugated pipe. Especially three-foot is what we're looking for right now. So that's some of the hang-up right now. They are continuing the storm, uh, project down through. They're waiting for pipe for the sewer side.
Okay. Never, you can do it right now to get that.
We'll give a copy of the contract.
I still think, you can't get emergency vehicles in there? You have UPS, you have FedEx, they can't get through to deliver the houses?
Mr. Bub, we had prior meetings before the job started. We had every agency from the police, the emergency, the fire department, every agency were up there, did a walkthrough. They have all, everything laid out, how they're going to do it if there is a situation. Yes, we're working on right now getting oil trucks in there to provide oil for residents in through there. The gas company, of course, did their job a year ago. That's been already changed source, we have no issue if we have gas. And the trash haulers, they were in a meeting, uh, a long time ago. They haul everything out of the rear. The only one we have right now on the agenda right now is the oil trucks coming in for this winter.
We have Rabbit Transit picking up senior citizens that have to go to medical appointments?
Well, Mr. Bub, when you're digging a trench, twenty-some feet deep, isn't like every night you go home and you put steel plating over top of it. That's just, you know.
So just tough lucking senior citizens?
No, Mr. Bub, I don't care if you're senior citizens or, uh, anybody. When you're doing a project like that, you have to work around it. What else are you going to do?
Find a way to work around it.
Well, we'll look into that.
Yeah, I hope you do before you get Susquehanna Avenue.
They passed that.
All right, is there any other audience comments about agenda items only?
You did that.
You're good?
Yep.
Yep, I'm here, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have a couple things on the agenda tonight. So the first one, you should have in front of you a draft schedule for the 2021 competitive for Susquehanna Avenue. Um, this is for your approval this evening. You'll notice there's a public hearing to be had at your meeting on November 22nd, and then a final public hearing on your meeting on January 10th. And then the application is due to DCV February 2nd. So as long as those dates are correct and you approve, we can move forward with this agenda or this schedule for your competitive for Susquehanna Avenue.
I'll make a motion?
Reichner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Okay, the second thing is the updated disclosure of funds for the, for your application. So every year, you have to do this disclosure report as part of your DCV, CDPG application. Um, I found when I did a final review of the application that the numbers weren't correct, I was having issues with this form not saving correctly. So I updated it based on information I got from the engineer, and then I spoke with Derek today and found out that information wasn't quite correct. We hadn't applied for everything that was indicated we had applied for yet. So I did send an updated version to Jo Lynn and Derek this afternoon with nothing on the page that shows anything secured or applied for because that has not happened yet. And then the next page will be the, um, the people who have interest in that. So the updated one would just be the city and CDCO as your administrator. And then the last page is the funds that may be used to finance the project. And that's where the list of funds that may be used is included on the updated one from this afternoon that I provided to Derek and Jo Lynn. So it has been updated?
Is this the form that you emailed me like two different, uh?
There is a new form today. Yeah, so one that I said last week was not correct, but I did not find that out until this afternoon, about 3 o'clock. So I was given an email saying that those things were applied for or in hand, and I found out they were not. So I updated the form, and you now have a new one. And I need you to sign it and email it back to me by tomorrow because it's due to be sealed Thursday.
Now, can every, let me, uh, and everybody on the board just please review this document, make sure everything is listed correctly because this is, this is the third form regarding this with errors.
And this is basically, um, so what you might have in front of you might be from last week, you have the new ones?
Yeah.
Good, good. So that's the new ones. So from what I understand, nothing else has been applied for yet. And I listed all the possible sources on the last page where the mayor signed. Okay, well, there's a new one today after I spoke with Derek. There is nothing on that page that shows applied for or in hand, the second page. There's nothing there. It's now blank. And then the last page will show the possible sources of funding for the project, and that's where the mayor needs to sign. So like I said, it's, it's due Thursday, so I need it back tomorrow. If, Mayor, you could sign it and email it back. No, you don't need to vote to pass it. It's just part of your annual application. Like I said originally, the form was not saving correctly at the COG, and I realized when I did a final review, oh, this isn't the right form. I think it might have been last year. Something was wrong with it. So I updated it, and then I found out what I updated was not correct based on the information I was given, so I had to update it again today. So the mayor just needs to re-sign.
So just due to those, uh, theoretical errors, I, I recommend that the board make a motion?
However you wish to do it, Mayor.
I'll make that motion. Sorry, Chris.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then the last thing I have is the subsistence program. I had a conversation with the CSO last week. They are not getting applicants, completing applications for the subsistence program. People just are, we've gotten through four that have been approved for a total of $12,741.23 complete for.
Just to be clear, that's, that's the total that's been provided? So we're out of that funding?
Yes, for rent, utilities, those things, um.
Do you know how many were received there?
I'm sorry, what?
Do you know how many people out of that total amount we actually received the funding?
There were four people that have been awarded that funding. I have a fifth one pending right now for utility payments. I'm just waiting for some information. But they are not getting any applications beyond that that are being completed. So they are recommending that we end the program as of the end of this month. They just aren't getting the interest in it. What we can do with those funds, should you choose to end the program, is we could move them into the suite project and do the first phase, the, the most recent one that we have the estimate for that's around $110,000. We could add this $50,000-ish to the current suite funding in 2021 and put that towards doing the first phase. We would have to get that phase done next year because your CD funds need spent next year.
Wait, how much is going to be left?
Around $50,000.
I see, I've had more businesses still saying that they're having trouble.
But they're not, we don't have a business program right now.
We can reopen that?
We could. If they're going to apply for it, you only have seven out, 12 applications last time.
They all, we fully funded our money. I, I don't know, I, and I, we've seen posts on Facebook of businesses struggling and that they're still.
My concern is that they are struggling, but they don't want to do what they need to do to apply for the funding. That's where you come into it.
We had, we had 12 applications, we funded, what, seven or eight that we were able to run?
Yes, right.
Some of them we couldn't, but we fully spent the money.
But why did these people apply last time?
They didn't, we said we spent all the money.
But the same people are still struggling, is that what you're saying?
Some new ones, some, 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 not so many.
My concern is everything you hear in the national news is that these businesses no longer need this money. They, things have improved and that now they're getting this money and they don't know what to do with it. So that's up to you. We can reopen the business program if you want to. But if you don't spend that money, it goes back to DCV.
We have how long to spend it?
Till November.
Of next year?
You have next year to spend it, basically.
So we could open it for six months, see what we get, and then reopen?
No, you won't have time to get your suite project done if you do that.
It doesn't work, you won't have anything else you need to do.
You will be out of it, it will go back.
I make the motion, we close it and move the money to suite.
I would absolutely love to help them. I just don't feel like they're going to come in. Just based on our experience at CDCO with economic development, they aren't coming in. Hang on, you know what the issue would be? We funded it under urgent need, and you don't have any more room to fund it under urgent need because you can only do 30% of your funding. So we would have to do it on job creation, and they would have to say a job was created or retained if they got that money.
Retained?
Yeah, they would have to go through the whole process of making sure that a job is retained.
I, I knew you made your motion, Rick. I'd rather wait and see if we can just, one, define that as exact of what, you know, make sure that the definition of that is there. And then, can we talk to a couple businesses downtown and we know?
Chris, I don't, I, I love your idea, I want to help them. We don't have time. The problem is with CDPG funding, we have to get the ER done, which takes at least three months. With this project, it may take longer given where it's located. And then we have to bid it out, and then we have to build it. All by the end of next year, before the end of next year.
So you're saying to wait till November 8th is too long?
I'm saying I wouldn't recommend it. But this is, I mean, this is up to you guys, what you want to do. I, my concern is that it's so hard to get these businesses to apply to submit everything you need from them to get the money out there to them. I would love to do it. I'm, I, it's just such a concern that they're.
Rick, can you make a motion?
I made a motion that we end this program effective October 30th or 31st. And we transfer the existing.
Two weeks make a difference.
No, two weeks is, if you want to take the next three weeks.
I mean, if we could find, like I said, Chris said, if we could find businesses, it's the most.
No, you absolutely don't have to make the decision tonight to put it in suite. You can do that in two weeks.
You can do that in two weeks.
We, we have that time, it's just you, I wanted.
We can't say we can't wait six months, what you're saying.
Right, I wanted you to be aware.
We can wait two weeks to see if we get somebody, or, not some, whoever.
Two weeks is fine. I just, I wanted you to be aware that CSO is recommending we close the program. So there's not going to be any more activity except this fifth one that I'm working on approving. But my recommendation is the suite project because it's an eligible project and we know we can move forward with it. If there's something else you want to do and you have enough businesses lined up to spend $50,000, and they are willing to say that they are retaining a job based on the money we give them, or they have less than five employees, then I don't think we have to go through that. So if it's a, it's a micro enterprise, we're good?
And they had to be open all through 2020.
They had to be open through COVID and show that they had an impact. They had to be able to say they had this impact. So I would love to help them. I just wonder why we didn't get an influx of, you know, 25 applications in the last round? Why didn't we get them all? Where were they then?
We don't have that many businesses, I mean, that, that would apply to them.
If they've already received it once, they're eligible to receive it.
That's up to you.
Yeah, we can give more, I mean.
That's entirely up to you.
I say we wait, I mean, I always go through Rick's motion first.
Yeah, Rick's motion's open, so let's do that first.
Okay, then I'll go, I'll go with the motion that we close this program right there Thursday, and then make a final decision.
We can reevaluate next.
The first meeting in November.
I'll go with that. Or we allocate the money on November 8th if that's what's then.
Exactly.
I'll second that.
Absolutely.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister? Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
All right.
Can you send me the requirements of what they need again?
Yes, all right. Okay, that's what I have.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. The police building construction update change order, please, Rick.
Um, so, uh, we have a small change order just to replace, uh, five existing wood doors with new doors. Um, the new doors would be utilizing their already existing hardware except for new hinges. Um, that change order total is $4,248. And if this change order is passed, um, as of including this change order and all the rest of them that have been previously voted on, um, we are, from the original bid acceptance of $829,235, um, we are 1.8% above that, or $844,634.78 of where we'd be at if we accept this change order. So, um, I would like to make the motion to change this, or accept this change order. Sorry, I would like to ask someone to make the motion.
Reese, you made your motion? Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
All right, opinion grant opening. I've been receiving a lot of questions regarding this since we announced it was October 29th.
So that is going to be changed, and we are no longer having that October 29th. Um, I do not believe we have a hard date set as of yet because we're waiting on some, um, uh, information from the sign individuals as far as when that will be installed. Um, once that is decided, I know Chief Air is going to be sending out the invites to appropriate individuals. Um, and I'm going to be contacting Representative Culver and Senator Gordon's office to make sure they're notified. Um, but where are we looking at probably, Jim?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure you've seen the sign was started today, the base was started today. They should have that pretty well, depends on the weather this week, pretty well finish.
Yeah, so.
Martin?
He said put the concrete in the hole.
Yeah, to put the, yeah, to put the footer in there on Lake Block and finish that end of it. And then we're waiting for a phone call from Arquette's and the sign delivery, and we should have that by Wednesday. I think the equipment that we're missing for inside the park is going to be, uh, later on than the sign.
Yeah, yeah, so, well, when we do the dedication officially, there might be some finishing touches that need to be done as far as maybe doing some furniture or things of that nature, maybe some IT work. But as far as the actual, um, uh, bricks and mortar portion, that should be done at that point.
And because we should have an estimated, um, time of completion for like the exterior signing, if that's what we're waiting for, and the remainder of the interior of the building?
No, Mr. Mayor, the, actually, it's the phone system and so forth.
Well, the, as far as, and when the PD station can, or, excuse me, the police can officially start working out of the station, is that referring to Mayor?
Yes.
So we're waiting on infrared because they have some, like everything else, equipment issues to make sure that we get everything. There are some things that the police department is going to need that we're not entirely sure if they can get. They're looking at, it should be fine, and, um, uh, but they're not quite sure. So they're coming in, uh, the end of next week now, um, to look at everything and to make sure that everything is, that they ordered is good. They don't need anything different, to look at the wiring that's already existing, all the brackets that are on the wall in the IT room, um, and to do reassessing basically and figure out how they can move the exist, the information from the existing building over. And all that is going to be figured out by next Friday. So we should have a more hard date hopefully by then as far as even the equipment that they have.
So that, so, so with, with that information, so it's, is it reasonable to assume that the PNE could move in there by the end of November, beginning of December?
It should be a target date.
Yeah.
But don't hold us through that because the equipment, there's no guarantee on the, the materials, the equipment.
No, but we should be finding out what the estimated delivery is going to be with all this.
We could get delayed again.
When they, when they, when this, all the equipment's in, then they can officially move in, but until they can actually physically get it in hand, we don't know. It's just like the Reagan Street, there is estimated dates, but if it doesn't get there because of, you know, the company can't get it, it is what it is at that point, so.
The drop, the drop dead absolute worst they said would be by the end of the year.
So by the end of 2021?
Yeah, but they said the thing, the way it's looking, there's a good chance it could be sooner, but they said the worst-case scenario, what they're seeing is by the end of the year.
Okay, what's, what's going on regarding the generator portion of the project?
The what?
Generator.
Generator. We're still working with Coopers out of Sales Grove. Uh, there was a question of the size of the gas line. And our last meeting, Kurt, I don't know if Kurt was there?
Yeah, I was there for the, um, for the question regarding the gas line size.
And the engineer that inspected out was working with Coopers on the size of the generator, and we haven't had a report back yet.
No, we should have that report this Thursday because we have a meeting on this Thursday at, at the building.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, anything else on that subject?
No, sir.
All right, um, strategic, strategic planning management program? So I just have this put on the agenda. Um, I had the chief prepare two different schedules, one for the 10-hour shift so we can see what the unit would be, one for the 12-hour shift. It hasn't been voted on previously and was on City third-class law. The mayor has been referring team to, uh, American Department. I'm just informing the city council that for 2022, we are going to proceed with the 12-hour working shift schedule. That's in the best interest of the overall wellness and productivity of the department at, at the current time.
Aren't you concerned about the safety of the officers, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, and I believe changing it to a 10-hour shift along with solving other major dangers, moving from the departments and the activities, investigations they're involved with, it would be more detrimental to the overall wellness and productivity of the PD if we changed to the 10-hour shift.
You feel one to a 10-hour shift, you can't handle the stress, is that what you're saying?
No, what I'm recommending, what I'm saying is, as the mayor and I record the police department, the police department will be moving to a 12-hour shift, maintaining a 12-hour shift for 2022.
What does the union and Brad say?
The chief, bring him on.
Yeah, I'm on it, I think everybody said, Chris.
I just want to know your opinion, just make sure it's all, everybody's good, that you guys are in agreement on it.
So I did a lot of homework, a lot of research on a lot of schedules. You all had copies of those schedules. Um, the 10-hour schedule is, is a nice schedule. Problem being with what the standard program recommended, um, with the 10-hour schedules, the minimum manning of, of 15, that's one of the hurdles. Like, you know, I was able to make a 10-hour schedule based off of the 12-hour schedule, but in light of, even what happened over this past couple days with people getting sick and being off interview, natural disaster, less than, um, stadium's blowing to higher, two more cops, which we know that's not in the playbook now. Um, over the last three, three to four years historically, um, I have actually been ran the numbers for overtime. And some of the stuff that the standard program recommended was because of overtime, and you only looked at really one year. I went back and did three years. Um, they recommend because of covering shifts and, and other things, you know, and training and stuff like that. With the 12, the 12-hour schedule has carried this department over the last five years. Going back, uh, five years, if you look at scheduling, uh, if we go back to 2017, and we were down to 1.5 officers. And that 12-hour schedule carried this through all that. Um, historically, over the last three years, I've been able to reduce overtime by working 12, schedule, uh, a variation of a 12-hour schedule, there's 1/8. There's no shift coverage problems, only when there's, uh, major incidents. Over the last two years, if you go back, even the last two years when I took over as the chief, uh, most of our, uh, obviously reversible overtime is a lot, you can take that out of the equation. But most of our overtime, uh, for the department has been through, uh, major investigations. The second thing that eats up a lot of the overtime is court, which I have no control over the court days and what, what, where the, uh, the office is scheduled with court. So it's tough for me to, uh, they can't negotiate with the judges because they, they pretty much run, run their own court, and that's the days they have to have it scheduled. And the third thing that the most of the overtime is, is contractual, and the fourth thing, actually shift coverage. The shift coverage is not an issue when it comes to covering for overtime. Only when there's a major incident, uh, major illness, sickness, somebody's hurt. If we went with a ten hour schedule, something gets hurt for a long period of time, I would have no choice but to switch right back over to the twelve hour schedule. Um, if something like that would happen, I learned what it is, and that has happened in the past, we've had injuries, uh, the amount of work that we're in, it, it couldn't happen. So, going forward this year, and I talked to the solicitor about this at length too. Um, going forward this year, this is gonna give me a true year, this is the first year going into, uh, a year that we're having, uh, our full complement for what the stamp recommends, eight plus one, including me is now. So this is the first full year we're going in having a full complement since two thousand and sixteen, I think it was, or seventeen. So this is gonna be the real tell this year, keep with this twelve hour schedule to try and see where the work is really eating with, uh, everything else. Um, so, like I said, it's a contract, it is a contractual issue too, there's two sections. Uh, I interpret the section, article one, that we can do, uh, the city can do what they please as the mayor wants to do. Uh, and then there's the, uh, for scheduling for the officers that they, they are a twelve hour continued shift in their, uh, work week. So, there's pros and cons to both. Um, with the ten hour schedule, it moves one day off, which gives them time to kind of be pretty settled down and get, get their heads back in games and time for some of the things that we're dealing with. The twelve hour schedule, they get that extra day off, you know, they work longer days, they, they work all twelve except one eight hour in between, they never work more than the eight to eight period. Unless it's van, vanishing type of stuff, overtime like court, uh, case there is a major incident, contractual, stuff like that. So, I, I honestly, I'd like the ten hour schedule, uh, unfortunately, just, they, things that happened the last couple days, it just, the twelve hour schedule waits sense going forward until we can really evaluate this year. And I think that if the city wants to reevaluate it at the end of next year, that, that would be a good time to really reevaluate.
And I think as far as stamp goes, you've done your due diligence, so when you, when you talk with DCD and when Derek, you have your conversation with them, you can show all the work that he's done, and I don't think it's gonna affect anything with them, this is again, it's a recommendation.
And they also, and they also said they're, they can wait until the contract is up to revisit.
Yep.
The situation.
Um, Chief, uh, quick question for you, since our treasurer isn't here currently, as far as the overtime reversible, what counts as that, just so I, I'm aware?
What could be, reversible overtime could be grants, could be drunk force, DUI checkpoints, um.
Okay. Like a checket?
That's, that's where you get a lot of your reversible overtime. Now again, it doesn't pay for, like, I know capitalism is always on the, uh, some other things, but it paid the majority of the salary, uh, of that, so. Um, that's basically what your reversible overtime is, so the checkpoint, if the city gets reimbursed the wage, so there's no out, really out of pocket cost.
Okay.
You don't pay the benefits, you only pay the.
Correct, correct, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome. That's all I have on that subject.
You're, you're muted, Mayor.
Sorry about that. All right, well, thank you, Chief. All right, moving on to something related logical education partners, is there any update regarding that? An update that I have from two, three, 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 they had one of their recent meetings, they did provide me a list of future dates that they're going to be at, uh, um, the, the future park, uh, for volunteering. So they're going to be there November fourteenth this year, they're taking December off. Then they'll be back January thirtieth, February twenty-seventh. March twentieth, April twenty-fourth, May twenty-two, June nineteen, July seventeen, August twenty-one, September twenty-five, October sixteen. And November thirteen of next year, those are the things they will be at the red lines so that, um, that all the departments are aware the volunteers will be there. Is there any other update regarding the project?
No.
Okay, well, um, Jim, where are we at regarding the movement of that, uh, abandoned building of the project?
Well, I talked to the contractor, trying to work out a date, but you had to coordinate with municipal authority, as soon as I come up with a date, I'll let you know, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
You said you wanted to be there for some photographs and so forth?
Yes, I would like.
Yep, got you covered.
All right, all right, next one's the Reagan Street project?
Go ahead, Derek.
Um, so, uh, the city applied for an extension to road closure on Reagan Street. Um, to do, uh, continue doing work through the winter, uh, winter months because of supply chain issues. Um, Penda did grant that, um, so, uh, the reason is, we weren't able to get done, work that we needed to get done because of supply chain issues. Um, so, in order to open that road up, like originally planned, we were gonna have to pave it and then rip it up again in the spring. Put the existing work back into it that we needed to finish on there and then repave it again. It would have been extremely expensive to do so, um, and because again of supply chain issues, it just didn't, uh, the timeframe that we were expecting to get it done, uh, really got extended because of that. Um, so they will be working through the winter, we've been in contact with emergency services. Um, um, our public works has been in contact with Penda about plowing to make sure there's, uh, uh, proper access and where the snow will go. Um, once the, well, during these months, uh, there won't be any open, uh, cavities that are not being currently worked on. Uh, there will be stone put in, uh, excuse me, to ensure safety, there will be also barricades and, um, well, there will be fencing. And there will also be, uh, um, access points as far as walking path for individuals to go across and, uh, onto the, um, side that the residents currently inhabit. Uh, to make sure that they can get their, um, mail and packages and so forth. So, uh, we've been in coordination and contacting everybody, um, as far as emergency services go, and, and everybody has a game plan to make sure that, uh, the road is as accessible as possible, uh, given the certain situation.
Was the date they approved the extended closure?
I don't have to go back to next year.
Yeah.
So the dating season?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's just gonna stay?
They rolled it back up in the spring, I forget the date, and that, they're just gonna follow into that.
Yeah.
They'll continue working as long as the weather permits.
Yeah. Obviously, if they put on, puts snow on it, it's not working, but. Is there any questions on that? Okay, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, so we're on to the second rating of the, uh, the buildings. Make the motion to accept the second rating, you'll have a second.
Second.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Brocious.
Yes.
Aister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes. Uh, regarding the city administrator's, I make a motion to accept the second rating.
Second.
Reese.
Yes.
Brocious.
Yes.
Aister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Okay, regarding the community diversity, equity and inclusion office, I make a motion to accept the second rating of that, you'll have a second.
Second.
Brocious.
Yes.
Aister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Brocious, the mayor of the second.
All right, so you're having your packet there, all the city lots, uh, that obviously we own. And just keeping it simple, because before they were described based on a business near them, sometimes that brought negative attention to a business because something was happening there. So to keep it easy, I mean, it's gonna take time for everybody to learn, but all we're gonna do is list them by alphabet, like lot A, and as you see on your list, where that lot would be. And that'll make it a lot easier for signage around town, for example, say, you know, lots A, B, C, D, this direction. And also at the lot will have like a description, like whether it's permitted or information, like if you wanna get a park, a parking pass wherever it may be. So anybody have any questions on that?
Uh, yeah, numbers. I have a, I have a question on lot C.
C.
That's not city-owned.
It was just on.
And the, the caption says city-owned, Sunbury on public parking lots, lot C is owned by the railroad.
Okay, we can exclude that one then. They'll, they'll move everyone up a letter then, so if D becomes C.
Wait, wait a second, no.
I'm responsible, we don't own that.
Or, yes, Bill, we lease that belongs to, uh.
Norfolk Southern?
Norfolk Southern, but that's, but you can still keep it on there because we refer to that lot.
Okay, we, we can refer to however you want to.
Well.
Right.
In fact, I'm sorry, Jim, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but maybe we just say, take out the word owned in the captions and say city of Sunbury dash public parking lots, does that work?
That could utilize quite a bit, but C does.
Okay, that's fine. Oh, Kurt, was that, was that, was that what your question was on that lot?
Uh, yeah, but I was just wondering, did you figure out how many signs you would need for the different entrances are mystifying?
Well, I said that can be determined how, like, we can put them all out and then determine, all right, we need more, we'll say on Fourth Street for example, or more in front. It's all gonna be based on, once we put them up to see, all right, do we need more at that point?
Do we need more, it might be, it's gonna be more, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, it might be more directional signs than anything at that point, and trying to figure out, uh, where people are coming from. My guess is quite a few of them are probably gonna come off of Market or Fourth, that'd be my assumption, but, um, and trying to have appropriate signage at that point to get them to the appropriate lots. That's probably where we'll need to look and strategically decide on what road we're going to do that on because we don't wanna do it on every offshoot road from those major, uh, thoroughways.
Correct, yes.
But that has not been decided.
I know, for example, Fourth and Art Street originally used to have a directional sign for public parking, or municipal parking lot. Um, Queen down on Art Street, but I don't, I'm not sure, but that was removed, but that's a good example of what you're talking about.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Good night's job.
Thank me, thank Derek and Steve.
And just, just to clear, all these lots on the, the first and second page, are we currently maintaining ever snow removal and everything?
Um. Uh, the skating rink, yes, but not the skate park. Uh, the boat lodge, uh.
Two employees.
Actively plow that because boaters aren't using it in that time of the year.
Other than that?
I'm gonna have to go down through and check, but.
They all.
Walco, yes.
All right. Cause I, I would like to, I would like to just at least see on our, uh, list of what was it we're currently maintaining, so we know what, what we're really responsible for.
Well, I'm referring to snow removal.
Oh, okay.
We maintain them all, and that's why I don't think it's suggested, just get an aerial map.
Yeah, the, yeah, and like I said, we can post that on city website as well, so.
Yeah, okay. We, we are working on the aerial map, yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any, any other questions?
Excellent, I'm happy.
Do we need to put this one? All right, so I put an informal motion to name these city, uh, lots for public parking, the following names on the front and back page, do, do I have a second?
First, second.
Aister.
Yes.
Karlovic.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Brocious.
Yes. I'm just gonna keep going, Kurt, some next again, so we discussed, I don't know if it was last meeting or two meetings ago, about, uh, the American Rescue Funds and giving the employees, um. A bonus for working through those, uh, pandemic times to current date. Um, I believe, well, I don't know if we settled a number, the, the number discussion was for a full-time employee was two thousand dollars and a part-time employee was a thousand dollars. Um. Uh, what I'd like to do tonight is, uh, get a motion, oh, get a vote and a motion, a, a motion and a vote to start, uh, accessing at least that portion or setting aside that portion of the funds. Since we have, Derek, correct me, we had half of it in the bank already, correct?
Correct.
And following, obviously, the proper paperwork to get that, uh, monies to the employees by the end of this year, well, before the end of this year, preferably.
I second that motion.
For Christmas.
Well, hold on, I, there's more detail that we just, I just wanna discuss first, before Christmas, of course. And, um, how we wanna do like, if you're hired after a certain date for full-time or part-time.
So who's gonna administer our money, so can we start giving out our money if we don't know who's administering the money?
Well, I'm saying, can I just make that motion, once we figure out who's administrator money, that's the first thing that we decide to start on, other than waiting for another meeting after that.
That's fine, so that way, so the next meeting when we choose, because this is a discussion day to look at the, the proposals.
Correct, yes.
Next meeting, we choose an administrator.
Boom, there's the first line of, yes, so, I just want first ask.
First question? How, uh, uh, when we discussed this before, we, one of the discussion points was whether they were working during the pandemic or not.
Well, I, I mean, I don't have an issue with that, I think my issue is when they're hired, so I'm not saying, just say, for example, Derek didn't come on until this year of twenty twenty-one. So is he still getting the full time of the two thousand, or since he started in twenty twenty-one, he's just getting a thousand since he was, you know?
I would say just paraded by amount of time worked throughout that year.
Okay.
So if you work eighty percent of the year, whatever that amounts to, you get eighty percent of the money.
When you're talking twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty-one.
And who are still employed, obviously, still employed with the city, they're part-time, full-time.
So if it was two thousand, say it was two thousand, they were forty percent of the time the.
Forty percent of the two thousands, so starting as of March of twenty tw, March of twenty twenty.
Okay.
Well, no, you would just do it January first of twenty twenty-one to the end of this year.
Oh, okay.
Because all new employees that we've hired this year are still gonna be included in that, so, and the ones that have left, we're not gonna.
Yeah, yeah. Obviously, we're not that, yeah.
The money, the money was, I thought the money was given for the work they've done during the pandemic, the people that worked through the pandemic.
Well, technically, we're still working through the pandemic.
I understand that.
Technically, we.
So we're giving nothing for twenty twenty then?
No, 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 it's the same thing, those people are.
It's the same thing. They're still here.
They're still here, I'm saying, if they're still here.
But you're giving them two thousand.
Full-timers, two thousand, part-timers, the one thousand.
And this is nothing against Derek, but you're giving Derek eighty percent of two thousand.
Well, that's.
Full-time employee.
Yeah.
He's a full-time employee.
Yeah, but he wasn't here in twenty twenty, so you're cheating the people who were here in twenty twenty.
No, you're going back to the, the percentage.
He's saying.
You get a percentage.
The percentage, she was, this, you're saying cheating the part-timers that were here.
No, I'm cheating, you're cheating the twenty twenty people.
What he's saying, if you started.
Two years through this.
If you started in twenty twenty-one, if you started in twenty twenty-one, technically, when the pandemic started, January is twenty twenty.
We just go fifty percent.
I wasn't here for the whole twenty twenty, just twenty twenty-one, so I was only here half the pandemic, but I'm getting full of that amount of money.
So.
But the pandemic's not over, I don't.
Are, are there any plans for the department to hire any other additional employees coming?
It'll, it'll be as of thi, as of this date, for, as of this moment, I guess you could say.
Instead of, instead of doing this percentage different, why, why don't you just do it just across the board, all full-timers that were employed and are currently still employed since the beginning or whatever date it is, they get the two thousand, so Derek, we get the two thousand. And then a thousand for all part-timers that are still currently employed from the beginning.
I can't believe I'm saying this, but I don't think that's fair, I'm arguing against myself getting more money, but I wasn't here the whole time before the pandemic. So me personally, I don't think I should get the full two thousand. I, I, I know it's simple doing it that way, but for myself personally, I, I don't think that's fair.
So, what, what, what Chris is saying, like the percentage, so for example, Derek worked fifty percent of the pandemic, so he gets fifty percent of the two thousand dollars. Just say we hired somebody like Jeff in May, he was here, for example, we'll say twenty-five percent, he gets twenty-five percent, is that what you're saying?
So percentage time from March twenty twenty is what you're saying, to now?
I, I got, that's what I'm.
I was saying from January one twenty twenty-one, the end of the year that you were this year, we're still doing the pandemic. You have a bonus, you're giving employees a hundred.
All right, we know all the four hundred employees that were hired on this year, but in percentage them as well?
That's what I'm saying, I would percentage anyone that was hired last year.
Yeah.
Did they get the full?
They get the full amount if they were hired last year. Anybody hired this year, they get a percentage based off of the amount of the total year that they're, they've worked. Um, and that would be it, and then that's an easy number to just calculate, and then that's what you have.
All right, so put that in a form of motion.
I'll make that motion, two thousand full-timers, one thousand part-timers.
Who are still.
Percentage pace for people that were paid in twenty twenty-one based off the amount of time they've worked this year.
And, 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 uh, excuse me, the people who are still employed are getting that money, not the past ones, just like that.
Well, yeah, that's up, we're not gonna pay.
We're not forced anyway, so.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
All right, my second thought. Karlovic.
Yes.
Right there.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Brocious.
Yes.
Aister.
I, I have a quick question dash comment on that issue, um, Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, but we have the power to administer those funds ourselves, correct?
Correct.
So, prior to choosing an admin, or would it benefit the city to expend those monies prior to choosing an administrator, because then we don't have to pay? prior to choosing an administrator, because then we don't have to pay somebody to administer that portion of the funds?
Do we think it's all, it works out? Is that easy to do? Do you feel confident that you can do that?
That, we had discussed that in the past, Derek and I, so I just thought, I mean, not on that subject, but we had discussed.
Yeah.
So for that portion, between the city administrator, treasurer's office, we can do that.
We can do it in-house.
In-house.
You could, you could do it in-house, I mean, at least the two proposals that are front of you aren't.
Major ones.
Well, they're, they're not, they're not, uh, they're not based on, in, uh each item, so it wouldn't necessarily change as far as the, the cost of them, to my knowledge, unless, you know, we would talk to them, but um to my knowledge, it wouldn't change the cost of them, so it wouldn't like, it's not like it would go down or anything. That being said, yes, to answer your question, we can still do it ourselves.
Or can we get the money on senior?
Yes.
Well, not while you're in short for this, just to do a motion to pay the funds meeting.
Yes, okay.
And make sure that we figure in the Bennys on the cost out of that rescue money.
Yes, yes, yes.
Well, with the taxes and all that. We just said they paid taxes on the two grand.
As far as the income, like there, yeah, there is, yeah.
Well, there is, okay, yeah, so we take it out of that for the employees, but the city will owe.
X amount of dollars for.
Yeah.
Bennett.
Okay, but we want to take it out of rescue money.
I, uh, I think we have to, actually, as you're saying that.
Yeah, I think you have to.
Yes, then yes, yeah, we have to, yeah.
So that way, we're not going back to the general fund, say the E O X.
Yeah, which we can calculate that for yourself.
Yes.
Okay, so.
So, so will we have all these numbers for the next meeting, though?
Yes.
We have, those numbers you can get immediately once you.
Well, Kevin can calculate it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think you need to bring that back to a meeting, and that's just, they, they run the numbers.
Could you hear Chris?
No.
You said, you don't, that doesn't really have to come back to a meeting, cause then Kevin can just calculate that.
And say that's what it will be.
Yeah, that's what the number is for the, for the benefits and for the Medicare and all that kind of stuff.
If you will, then in the motion, will we include that a portion of the taxes would be removed from the COVID funds then? So that is clear in the motion.
I'll make a second motion. It says that we'll pay the funds immediately on the next pay and pay the extra governmental costs out of the American Rescue Funds.
Second.
Well, let me just finish right now.
Sorry.
And that does not include elected officials?
Yes, good one, don't.
Right there?
No, no, it does not.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, no, no, yeah.
Here, you have.
I thought that was.
No, no, Kevin.
I know you've got it for.
Somebody said, we turn to an employee, I said, no.
Oh. Yeah, I guess technically, no.
Yeah, no. Bring, I'm sorry. I know.
Righty?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Actually, the mayor, no.
Joe and Jolene, if you're consistent with this one regarding the sweep committee and insurance aspect.
Yeah, I can speak to that, Mayor. Um the sweep committee, we need a sweep committee, basically. Um we need to name such persons as are necessary or will be beneficial to sweep, to run a committee. The reason we need to do that is to be able to have them elect from amongst themselves a officers so that I can include them in the corporation that I was authorized by the city to create um for purposes of sweep. So basically, what I'm saying is, the city, you all asked me to create a nonprofit corporation um to benefit sweep. Um we would need to, at this point, name committee members, I believe the mayor would have three in mind. They would appoint among themselves the officers for that nonprofit corporation. And at that point, we could fall, or that committee, when I say we, that committee would then fall under our blanket of coverages insurance-wise, et cetera, much like the Sunbury Little League and those other entities.
Should there be somebody from the city as either a voting or non-voting member of that committee?
It would, that would be fine, yes. They just have to be a member of the, well, they just have to be a member of the committee, or, yeah, the board itself.
Will we be able to come to our actual meetings and assess the property?
Yeah.
Right. So the point being.
I don't know if that's necessary, because somebody from the city's gonna be involved because that's go through parks and rec.
Right, and that's what I, that's where I assumed we already were, with you having appointed you to handle sweep on behalf of the city. So this is, the city's gonna have a hand in sweep no matter what. This is for the outlying nonprofit corporation, which we don't have to have, it, it'd be like saying, do we have somebody on the board of the Sunbury Little League? Which we do not.
Right.
Um same principle, same principle, but we still are involved in, would have, retain our same involvement, if you will. Does that make sense, Mayor?
Yes, so I would actually like to present the names to the workers of the committee. So it would, um, for, for any people that's been involved with the aspects that we're doing regarding trying to create the committee and create activities for active completion of construction, maintaining like the community involvement. It would be, of course, myself, um, as president, Kurt Kurulich, at the time, and then it would be scout master for two-three-three-three, Donald Roush, who's been involved since the, since last year and been at the meetings here, and then the, their two-three-three committee chairperson, which would be Nuba Bell. Those two people have been involved, willing with this project, they are very dedicated to the city to make sure that this project um prospers.
Kurt, what's that last name again?
Nuba Bell.
Okay, thank you.
We need to vote on that so you can submit the application for the nonprofit.
No, I already, we've created a nonprofit corporation. What I need is the committee to be appointed so that they can elect among themselves the officers of the nonprofit, so that I can put it into effect.
Was that a, I guess it's a, I probably have to state it themselves.
How about the, the limits, term limits on your committee should be rotation?
What, what do you mean, what?
Term limits.
On, you, you have a three-year term and stagger them? Kurt, doesn't really matter, but I think for the corporations, don't you have to have that?
Well, no, for the corporation, there has to be a yearly election. There would be a yearly election for this operation.
Okay. So it's a one-year term?
You got it, and the people, the people with the committee can be on there for eternity, um, it's a matter of, you know, they may come and go as.
Would they draft their own bylaws?
They would draft their own bylaws, I'd help them, and uh, yeah, we would take care of everything for that, for, for those, you know, issues.
Alright, so since Kurt named himself, I'll make a motion to appoint those three people to the.
Second.
Joe, real quick before we go into the voting, should I recuse myself from this vote?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
I recuse.
I abstain.
Staying, sorry.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Alright, thank yous. Alright, uh Mr. Backer for the R C P.
Um, so uh, we had a meeting last week, I believe it was last week, um to discuss a RAPP grant um for us to be the applicant for Fresh Roast and Coffee LLC, um for them to purchase a piece of equipment, um Representative Culver and Senator Fortner, officers are, are well aware of this. Um um our solicitor, Bill East, created a contract that Mr. Oaks did sign, um and I believe all of you have reviewed, and I am looking for a motion to uh accept this contract in its entirety and for the mayor to uh sign.
I'll make that motion, sir.
Second.
It's okay, let me jump in real quick. The contract that you're approving would be the one with RAPP, correct?
Correct.
The contract with, that I created with Mr. Oaks was a indemnity agreement such that, you know, that's between the city council and Mr. Oaks. That would also need to be entered by uh the mayor, signed by the mayor.
That's the one I'm referring to, I apologize, so.
Right.
That one was already approved, though, wasn't it?
That was already approved, but I don't know that Kurt signed it yet.
You did not sign it.
But that was.
So what I'm saying is, part of that, also, you're giving authorization to enter into the RAPP process. That, that's what I'm talking.
He, yes, then technically, both of those were voted on last meeting, but I'm just looking for, to make sure that everybody's good with the, the verbiage of the contract that he created, and um, I, I mean, Mayor, did you wanna vote again on that, or did you just wanna check? I guess I should ask.
Yes, I, I would prefer a motion to accept this.
There is, there's a motion and a second, right?
Yes, do make motionize that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Very thank yous.
Quick question. Uh Mr. Mayor, I would question Mr. Oaks, is this your packaging here?
It is.
Would you do us a small favor?
Sure.
Somewhere on here, make sure, uh manufactured in the city of Sunbury.
We can work on that. Well, it will be on the outside of the boxes, it's on that, we, cause we actually have to. I don't think I can do it on the individual pack, but it, the boxes all say Sunbury, yeah.
Anything labeled for retail sale, we'll say.
Yeah.
Because somewhere in Timbuktu, when they open up, it's like, Sunbury, where is that? And they'll hook up on a map and come and visit.
They do. You would not believe how many people I get showing up from Washington DC and Colorado and just weird Columbia, like just crazy stuff. They walk in our door all the time.
Remember, you said two hundred employees someday.
I, well, we went from twenty to forty-something, as the picture shows, in two years, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great job, you're doing fantastic.
Thank you.
If you're in the city of Sunbury, that's someplace else.
You're right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, the easement?
Um, I'll just.
I can take care of that. Oh, I know Jeff's here, and Jeff and I had discussed it, the easement is basically a request from the Upper Augusta Township to place a sanitary sewer line over across certain grounds of the city. Basically, it's necessary for the purposes of their sewer, it's much like those easements we've already granted to Upper Augusta for that same purpose. I reviewed it, there's nothing to it, it's fine and legal, and that's all I have.
Second.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Alright, are you going to hire a part-time officer for Sean Williams? I'm making a motion to accept him at the current part-time salary as an as-is-on-the-basis for the department, for his expertise and skills that he can be of for, for lot he's up.
Second.
I have one quick question, Mayor. That we will only be paid for services as he renders them, is that correct?
Correct.
Next question is, Joe, do you think we're gonna get any, he, he not using part-time money funds from the union saying that, that he, we're spending part-time money for another employee?
My understanding is from Chief Herr that he spoke with the union and their fund.
You think we can get something to write you?
I can certainly do that. I'll ask them for something.
Well, honestly, you, you don't need anything to write it, it's contractual, the city can use part-time, part-timers, anything they need for scheduling and or uh work, so it, that's, it's a contractual thing, so that was put in years ago, that the city can use part-timers as they see fit.
When I, I agree.
We're not using the part-timers to replace full-timers, it's okay.
And I agree with all of that, but Brad, isn't it also true that you spoke with the, the union that they were fine with hiring Mr. Williams?
Yeah, there, there was no issues there, I don't know why that, why that was even brought, become an issue, there was no issue with the union about hiring a part-time.
Well, I think the city just wants to be careful, but um honestly, I think that base is covered.
Brad, uh one more quick question, I'm sorry. Uh with him being employed at the school district, he won't be contacted during school hours, will he?
No, I'm, uh, he's, it's, 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 what it also does, it helps us uh for the school district by his uh case he's off property and sees a, you know, a major incident happening, that he can uh kind of work both ends if, if need be, so he won't be working on school time, but the main thing we'll be using him for is his expertise with, uh and I have plenty of opportunity that can do uh in major investigation, but what it does is gives us that uh capability, use him for his knowledge and also contacts for anything major we have. Uh and like I said, he, he, he uses like the part-timers are now on an as-needed basis. That's how part-timers are work looked at as right now, when we are.
Brad, one question I have real quick. When Backer and the school district was starting their whole police department and they hired him, did anyone ever come to you, I don't remember coming to council, did anyone ever come to you about the city just hiring a cop that could be on staff at the school their whole time and then be able just to work part-time for us in the, in the summer?
What the state did a few years ago.
And then the school pays back?
Well, what they did a few years ago was they changed uh the way the SRO works in the, in the school districts, now the school districts can have their own police departments to kind of arrest powers and stuff, like, where a lot of times some of the SROs were, they weren't, they had that kind of arrest power, they were with other departments. Uh but the way they, they have is they can carry their own police departments, they have their own security, that is a certified police officer, so. And this, this, it's kind of like, we're getting our, the best bang for a buck with him, uh like again, we don't have to have full books all the time, it's only when, as, as it has needed basis, like we do right now with part-time, now we'll be on, absolutely.
And if I may speak to that point real quick, I'm talking too much tonight, but as I'm sitting here thinking about what you're saying, we have a whole lot less liability if he's not a Sunbury police officer working in the school.
I just am also thinking as it turns out, at school time, about constantly hearing about their, their debts and their.
No, I, I understand, I'm just saying, for city-wise, I liked the lack of liability.
Makes sense.
One other question, Mayor, what will his salary be when we're using him?
The same as your commit rate for part-time, which I believe is eight-point-two dollars an hour.
There was already a motion and a second.
Yeah, I said.
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Alright, uh Chief Herr, can you explain to the board regarding the, the grant, um that we pay up grant and then we need to reverse if we were accepted regarding license plate readers?
We did this before, uh we got some grants out there and, and out there speaking to the controller, um you recommended that we actually put a line in there for grants, uh especially the ones that are going to go out instead of the treasurer pouring them out of the line items, it's supposed like there's a big deficit, there really is. Um so we changed the way we did that, so this next uh grant, you should know by December, it's also going to buy, we're looking at getting license plate readers, uh tactical equipment for training for self-defense classes that we were, you know, required now by BoP can add and take. Uh so starting next year, so we're getting some of that equipment, just some other safety equipment, uh and all this, it's basically, it's a pass rule, it's basically, the city pays it up and then they get rid, fully for fully, fully funded for it, so.
So we just make, um, and, or, so we just.
I just want to, what's up, Mayor?
We need a motion to accept this grant, Eddie.
Well, I don't think we need a motion, I, what I, what I recommend and make to solicitor, to China on this, uh is if, if we are agreed to be awarded at, at time they accept it, when it comes due. But we know in December, we, we reward the monies, that how we say, part of, part of our votes, we don't, so if we don't get it, then, you know, then, then we'll book.
So who would apply, who'd devote, apply grants, cause it could sound, vote on all other grants?
There's vote on grants, I understand.
Yeah, I, what I would suggest is what Councilman Brochus and Councilman Reese are suggesting, which is that we can vote tonight with the contingency that if it's not, if we do not receive the grant, then obviously, we would not accept it.
Okay, that works.
Alright, so make that into a form of motion.
Okay.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Alright, administrative assistant got um description upgrade, so you all have a copy of this, um it's, I included it in the office, I worked through this regarding what it is this needs, and it, it shows on here a portion of hands of the Department of Finance, that can use it in part-time, so make a motion to accept this job description from the administrative assistant.
Second.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Aister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes. Alright, we have the twenty-two, what?
Nothing.
Nothing, you're gonna keep going.
Alright, we have the twenty-twenty-two holiday schedule for the city employees, you know, I haven't talked to this, what about you? So make a motion to accept the, the, the holiday schedule.
Second.[1748.44]
Wasn't here for discussion?
Huh? I mean.
Is it under discussion?
Oh, no, no, this is, this is for new visions, this is being.
I mean, you mean we're discussing the holidays we want to have or not have? I thought it was just for timing, just to get it out there.
Yeah, cause Mike, Mike asked me about that, so I got one so early, cause he's doing the scheduling for next year for.
What about, what about January, February, there's no holiday in January or February?
Yeah, actually, New Year's Day falls in this year.
On Saturday.
On the Saturday, so it's.
Okay, so there's no holidays in January or February now?
February is present.
But that's one of the, that's one of the days.
Yeah, that's right.
We can always ask them.
You're a teacher, you get lots of days off.
Oh, you might wish. I'm off, I'm still going in.
I think it all, yeah, just for ease.
Is it really working if you love what you do?
Right, right.
All right.
Do we have a second, do we get a second?
I think a curt motion. A curt motion, then I'll second, or I motion, I motion.
I'll second, whatever.
Um, hold on, I gotta catch my bear eyes. Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
All right, and then we have a meeting, twenty twenty-two council meeting days. Make a motion to, that these days are switching council meetings, so a second?
Second.
I, wait, I question, uh, we do not have October tenth as a holiday. We should not, we should have a meeting on October tenth.
Is there any other holiday, like that we don't recognize on October tenth?
Yes, Columbus Day, they're getting a personal day in Louisville, so if they don't want to work, they take off. But the city is open that day.
So it's kind of like a half the nation, right?
Yes.
I have no issue putting one on.
I think there should be a meeting October tenth also.
So October, so October tenth is Columbus Day, we don't recognize that as a holiday, but if employees.
Oh, okay.
So if employees want, if they take the day, they have all, but if they don't, they get the personal day, correct, correct, Mike, get that right?
In fact, the, the, the city is open for business.
But the city is open for business on that day, so he says we should have a meeting on that day as well.
Okay, so put October on the list.
All right. October tenth. So you revised your motion, include October tenth?
Yes.
Any other questions about this, if we want to look?
Johnson.
All right.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
All right, Councilman Reichtner, two fiftyth, uh, committee finances.
Now, I believe if I'm correct, Ms. Ox, is that you and, you and the treasurer had talked about this two hundred and fiftieth financing, that it was going to be switched back over to the committee?
Correct, it would set up, it would set up an account that the committee then would, we have identified the people on the committee that are, um, authorized to sign checks, and we'll have all of that, we have all of that lined out responsibilities for, for, for taking responsibility of the account.
Okay, so my motion is going to entail that we move that over to your account, but I don't know if you have it that way or not, but the only thing, speaking with the treasurer and some other people, um, our recommendation is that you require more than one signature on all your checks.
And we, we have that requirement, yes.
So I make the motion that we move that account from our treasurer, or from our, to, to the committee itself.
Okay.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
All right, Councilman Reese, first reading for proposed congregation?
Yep. Um, I don't know, Joel, you want to add anything to this, is finally the, all the revisions that have been gone over the last year and two years at least.
Two, Mayor.
Yeah, and then the, uh, the ordinance that goes along with doing it of adopting it. Um, I don't have much, because it's gone over so many times, unless there's anything you want to add before motion?
No, sir.
Okay, motion to, um, to, to accept the ordinance with the Schedule A, the voluntary revisions.
Second.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
All right, first reading on uniform PMRS.
Yep, so this is, um, there's two separate things here, basically, as we're switching the pension plans, and Joel, and just if I'm wrong or anybody correct me, just basically we need to, um, go over closing the PMRS account, and then creating the ordinance, um, that goes along with opening the new one to define with that committee, correct?
And then me and Joel talked about since, there is, we have in our ordinance right now is non-uniform pension plan ordinance, we're gonna name one as after.
Post twenty, post twenty-one, uh, non-uniform pension plan.
So there'll be two of them.
Okay, so make a motion to, uh, I'll do this as two. So do first motion, um, to adopt the first reading of the non-uniform PMRS plan closer ordinance? Make that motion.
Second.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
And then make a motion to adopt the first reading of the, uh, non-uniform, uh, defined contribution for hires after one-one, twenty twenty-two, it's going to be.
Yes.
That's okay.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Councilman Brochus, did you give your celebration parade round?
Um, as you see in your packet, you will see the parade route for the two-fiftieth, uh, pretty much mimics the Halloween parade, but adds on down. Well, on the street to Second Street organizing there in front of Wise's, any questions on that?
How long of the route is it, Milwaukee?
Jo, Joel, do you have any idea, or John? How long the route is, if you had estimated, like, like mileage wise, or?
One point eight.
One point eight. Any questions on that? All right, so a quick, uh, for motion to accept.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister? Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Becker, you have a little bit of a chance through Street?
Uh, this is a property that the city currently owns, um, and, uh, Mr. or Councilman Ister and myself, uh, approached the county, um, to obtain funds uh, through their program to demo this building, um, and you should have the contract in front of you, um, to sign, and I'm looking for a motion to accept that, uh, truthfully funding, and then, uh, demo that building.
So what, what would occur with the property that's demoed, and why didn't we put this on the redevelopment authorities list?
We acquired the property back, Joey, back in those days, on church, and we finally getting around to get county money because of COVID, they were shut down, and now they're back in this.
And to answer your other part of the question, redevelopment authority, the county would have the contract with us, not with redevelopment authority? I think that was gonna be the plan from it all along.
And I think another reason was, at the time, the discussion was that the redevelopment authority shied away from it because it was gonna have to be torn down.
Ister? Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Repeat, sir?
So, even though we have a contract with InfraDAP that we signed, we still need MePush to an extent for the time being, because we need to make sure that we still have access to our current information, and we can get that over to InfraDAP, basically. So, um, they, and is it the end of this month, or the beginning of next month? Uh, we have, we, they sent us an agreement, and we don't have an actual contract with them, because I checked that. Um, it's month-to-month, but we needed to sign something, um, otherwise it just goes into effect again, um, and rolls over. Um, so, I'm looking to sign this, um, so we can make sure that we have all the information that we need for InfraDAP, otherwise we will have a, a gap.
The only issue, I'm sorry, I, I. Was he asking me?
Yeah, well, I don't, I think he was asking generally.
All right, basically, I'm not sure, I want the city to enter this. Well, there's no date, and it talks about intellectual property rights?
I think we might have had that.
Well, I'm sure we do, but the point is, I wouldn't want to, knowing we're going forward with InfraDAP, I wouldn't want to sign something with MePush stating, you know, hey, we're not gonna turn over your secrets when we're turning over everything to InfraDAP. Um, you know, having done it in the past, we are obviously not gonna turn over anything that we don't, you know, that is intellectual property of MePush, well, of MePushing. But that being said, I certainly wouldn't want to push our lock.
So, just don't do anything and see what happens?
Yeah, I wouldn't do nothing at this point. I mean, I think it's gonna roll over to another month-to-month.
I believe so too.
Um, and I think we're already there, because I believe that we're past the date of notice, so therefore I think we're already in for November, and we just wait and see where we're at.
We need to find out when InfraDAP can officially take over.
Well, that's what we're gonna find out next Friday, because I asked for access from MePush for certain passwords, basically, so we can have full access. Um, my concern in general is that those passwords may not be adequate to actually access everything, and that is my concern, because if we're not, you know, if we decide this, and that's why truthfully haven't canceled anything with, with, um, MePush, because if they gave me that and it wasn't adequate, and I said, hey, no, we no longer need your services, then we're kind of in a, caught in a hard place with InfraDAP, because they don't have everything to transfer over.
Is MePush obligated to give us the information? We need to do that?
Do we have a written contract with MePush? I, that, that agreement was entered long before I was here, so I don't know. I've never reviewed a written contract with MePush.
You can ask one.
Um, well, yeah, we should ask them if we have one, but in order to answer your question, I'd have to look at a contract that we had with them. If we don't have a contract with them, and we did an oral thing that was month-to-month or something, in that case, I would say, yes, we have the power to require our passwords, because they are ours.
So I have an email, because I asked that for a contract, and it says, no, we don't have a contract that you're actually locked into with our services, it's just month-to-month, and you can cancel at any time.
Okay, well, that answers that question, so if they won't give us the passwords, then obviously we'd have an issue, but I, I wouldn't see that as being practical. They do, they do with this all the time, so I don't think that would be an issue.
All right, so your recommendation is just to table this then, Joel?
Yes.
All right, so make a motion to table the management services agreement.
Second.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
All right, um, Mr. Becker, RC racetrack?
Um, so I believe it was last council meeting, uh, Councilman Ister and myself, um, approached or talked to council about a RC racetrack behind the, uh, hold me out, thank you. Um, uh, baseball field, there is some land behind there that could be utilized for a, uh, a RC racetrack, and I'm just looking for council's approval that we can use that land, not asking for any allocation of money or anything at this time, um, just that if we were to pursue this, as far as looking for grants or things of that nature, um, that it is a acceptable usage of that area.
Put that forth for motion to use that area for the RC track.
It's in center field, it'll be playground, ball field.
Yeah.
You get the field behind you.
Yeah, not, 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 not the field to play.
Behind, outside the fence, behind the field, in that area that we will. So I.
Just a dirt track, one of these RC cars.
Oh, okay, with the ones that were.
Yeah, yeah.
So do I have a second?
Um, Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Councilman Reichtner, go.
Okay, um, uh, we have the general fund expenditures of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars and two cents, and liquid fuel expenditures of three thousand, six hundred and two dollars and eighty-three cents, and make a motion we pay those bills.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Tax exoneration?
Uh, we have four requests for tax exoneration, three of them are deceased, one is a non-resident, the total is nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy cents. I make a motion we accept the exonerations.
Second.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichtner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Okay, we're on two discussions, there won't be any votes with the following topics. All right, Mr. Becker, your question, first.
Um, a few weeks ago, I sent two proposals to council, um, for their review. Um, in the meantime of that, uh, I found out after talking to the US Treasury that a report that would be due at the end of October is put off till March of, March, April of twenty twenty-two. Um, so any reporting and truthfully deciding who administers anything as far as putting it into their database has been put off till that time, so we do have more time as far as deciding if we want someone to administer it, and then, um, who that entity may be. Um, I would like to recommend to council that we do a workshop, um, specifically on this topic, um, and have both entities that we have currently, uh, present to council. Um, that way, if there's any specific questions that may, uh, arise, um, we certainly can have council ask that, and it gives ample time to go over everything.
I think also doing these funds that we voted for tonight will kind of give an idea of what all has to actually be done, and see what we need assistance on.
Were these, I mean, either of these two the ones that Danville or Bloomberg used, or how, how do they do their funds? Or who are they using their fund?
From my knowledge, I haven't seen them doing anyone.
So they're doing in-house, basically?
I can double-check that.
Yeah.
One, uh, one is obviously C-Top, who we contracted with other things, and then, I can't pronounce the other one, say the life of me.
That Zee one?
Uh, yes, uh, Zelovski, uh, Zelovski.
Zelovski.
Thank you. Um, the county is using their, them to administer their.
Okay, so there are local.
They're from Harrisburg area, but they're.
They're doing local ones here.
Correct, and they're, they're doing other municipalities, well, outside of Pennsylvania. So, it, would everybody be okay with setting that up at some point?
Yeah, it can hurt. Let's do the total rescue funds.
Yeah, 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 uh, just a, I mean, it could be discussion on outside of them presenting as well. Just a workshop just on that topic and have both entities present.
Yeah, sounds good.
Does that work with, for you, Mayor?
Can you repeat that, Derek?
Uh, just have a separate workshop just on, uh, American Rescue Funds by itself, and having both entities present the proposals to council, and then we can discuss, um, anything else that we want regarding those funds as well.
Yes, as long as the meeting is scheduled for after four PM here, I'll be.
Okay.
And we're here, if you have any questions right now, otherwise we're gonna split. It's a long meeting. Kim is here, if you have any questions for her this evening, and we did submit two different agreements to you, one for the, um, revenue loss, that calculation is complicated, it's disgusting, nobody wants to look at it, but we have people at C-DeCa who know how to look at those disgusting things, nobody else wants to look at it, so, I know that's awful, I can't do math. So, I let other people do it, so, there is a separate agreement for that that you could use. We have recommended in discussions with Derek that you do look at your revenue loss first, because that's where you want to recoup your money, you can then use that money for whatever you want to use it for, outside of the rest of the American Rescue Plan regulations. So you reimburse yourself for revenue loss, then you have those funds in your general fund to do with as you see fit and need to use, so that's what we recommend you do first, along with what you decided to spend with your employee bonuses, um, and then we submitted a separate proposal for the, the rest of the administration, so, if nobody has any questions, we'll get out of way. So if nobody has any questions, we'll get out of the way.
Do you know if there's other municipalities you're contracting with for these services with their COVID relief funds?
Yeah, Kim, who are we contracted with currently? We have a number, handful of them in this, in this region. Snyder County is our closest one, right here. I can't remember.
Do you happen to have maybe a number of how many municipalities that you're with for their funds?
The number, I don't know. It's off my head.
Okay.
But I think Blooms, I have not heard Bloomsburg, I administer their CDPG as well. I have not heard that they're using anybody else. I haven't heard anything from them.
And just, just for, I mean, obviously I'll work with you setting up for that work session, but if you could just have the name, well, if you can divulge that information as far as the names, but if not, just the number and.
How many others we're administering currently? Yeah, we can get that to you, absolutely.
You did say Snyder County, right?
Yeah, we're doing Snyder County. Yep, we know that one for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're reviewing that topic then?
If no one else has anything else.
Nope.
All right, moving on to the minimum salary for the municipal employees. So directly before this highest meeting, we were in a budget session, and we discussed fourteen dollars fifty cents full-time minimum wage for all employees, and thirteen dollars fifty cents for all part-time employees, and our seasonal employees, and that being reserved by the running of numbers to review most 2022 logic for the next meeting. I don't miss anything, folks.
Nope.
Okay, what is, since this is the discussion during the council, what is the council's discussion or input regarding the fourteen fifty full-time and thirteen fifty for parkers?
I just think we have to wait until Treasurer Trump comes back with those numbers so we have the accurate effect it will have on the budget, and before we make a standard minimum wage, as we said before, projecting out the long-term effects of hiring at that rate, along with doing, what else can you do, like putting, seeing what the job force, the number of individuals we need in each department. That way, we can predict long-term how our salaries will be affecting the city across the board. I mean, that's how I feel we should do it.
And this is where if we, if we created a fourteen fifty minimum wage for full-time, that would affect two full-time employees. If we needed a thirteen fifty part-time, that will affect two current part-time employees. All right, moving on to discuss a little bit about the budget. The treasurer received information about changes in the code office and the police department's budget that would increase the expenditures to allow for the wage increase, and he'll be getting us a projection on further outlook years for the wages projection. So Mr. Becker, Lerta.
Hold on, correct. I'm gonna add something to your budget. I mean, since it kind of ties it at the end without parking meters, I think we also got to look into putting funds or finding funds for updating our parking meters as well, because we keep saying it needs to be done. I mean, when we come back with our budget, maybe we can start talking about how we're gonna find those funds as well moving forward. I just figured I thought there's a fun about budget now.
Knowing what I know about the parking meters, that should not be included within proposed 2022 budgets?
No, I just said, I just saw budget. I'm just saying, if we have the next budget, we should start discussing it. You don't have to put it into 2022, but discussing long-term, like you said about the minimum wage stuff, like I think we got to talk about that as well, getting those replaced as well in the future.
Why don't we discuss it for 22? Don't we wait another year before we touch the meters?
I mean.
Do you know what funding sources would be available right now, and we're already in the stage that we need this first reading here to the council by the next meeting?
What we had said, no, next, next meeting. But what, I would say to Kevin at the end of the budget meeting, we know that based off of the changes that were made tonight, that there's going to be a surplus that's gonna come back in there that we can put as the capital improvements, so then the next council can basically have the conversation of budget with the parking meters, whatever is needed. You'll have that line item in there that you can use for that conversation.
True.
So there will be some money there.
If you find.
I think any of that, that extra funding made a reference should be put into the economic development line item, because the meters could fall to that, or there's no, there's no capacity.
It doesn't matter where it goes, just there was money there.
Yes, that's, Brad, how, are you still there?
He is, says he is.
Yes, yes, I mean, I'm sorry.
I mean, at the meters we have now currently, I know there's other options out there. How long does some, those meters normally last, in your opinion?
Well, those meters, I don't know if they've ever been replaced since I got here in twenty years.
Okay, so they last a decently long time, you'd say, if, once they're updated.
Yeah, I mean, they've gotten replaced several times, but the meters in the city are.
Old.
Good.
And I've done a little research on the meters. You're talking, I think the ones out there, you're looking at five hundred to a thousand.
So what do we currently have?
Currently have all the way up to, if you want to hire tech things, to ten thousand. So, I mean, it really depends on what direction the council wants to take the city truthfully with that.
Is there, I mean, don't want to start out with this number off the top of your head. Is there, do you know the number of meters we have in town by chance?
I don't have the numbers off.
All right, that's not a big deal. It's just a question. All right, that's, that's all I had on the budget.
All right, the Lerta?
I sent our draft Lerta proposed, gonna be proposed ordinance to the county and the school district. The school district did have some concerns in general about reassessment of properties. Their worry was having a property reassessed before Lerta for a lower value, and then going through the Lerta process and not basically having as much on the backend. I tried to explain and quote that concern by saying the county has to accept the reassessment, and I did talk to the county. It's not that it's impossible, but in large reassessment, you wouldn't like to reassess at a lower value or than it's currently at.
Well, that's a strange concern too, because isn't the whole point of Lerta to be able to lay the taxes to make improvements to the property?
Correct.
Which would raise.
You're gonna raise your taxes regardless.
So, so that was the point that I tried to make also was.
Was this the school district having a concern?
Yes. Even, even if I tried to, even if, say that scenario did happen, it got lowered, it, in theory, if it went from two hundred thousand to a hundred thousand, but they did two hundred thousand dollars of improvement, you still, at the end of it, you still have that hundred thousand dollars above, what it was originally before.
Well, regardless, that's out of our hands anyway. That's, I mean, that could happen regardless whether we have Lerta or not.
Correct, that's, I did bring that up, and.
Are they gonna be voting on that anytime soon, or is it just a discussion? Do they have to do a vote for support of it or anything like that?
So each entity actually has to vote on it like we do.
But do we vote first on the contract, and then it goes to them to vote?
Uh, we vote first because it came from us, and then they have to vote on it, but I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not gonna have, I'm not gonna have us vote on it until I get the, you know.
To support.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're good to go. I mean, I think we could.
I mean, we could, but this would have come right back.
But I wanted to make sure, they're bringing it to the rest of the board to, that was their concern, not the rest of the board, I should say.
I think it would make sense for us to bring it back, if it's finalized, to adopt it, and then go out to these ones and say, listen, this is what's happening everywhere.
Yes, I agree.
That's why we need to do it, and we've already put our full council's support behind it.
I agree, I agree.
And it's not like this is the first municipality doing it. It's already happening around us.
Oh, yes, yes, very true.
Do you hear back from the county or on their side are they doing it?
They, they can't say no.
Well, yeah, I mean, the county, they, Justin Skavery, who I sent that to at the county, I forget his exact title, but he does development at the county, and he has not heard back any issues of it, and he said if he heard anything back, it would just be issues. If they didn't say anything, they have no issue with it. That being said, they allowed, they did Shamokins, so I find it hard pressed that they would find issue with ours to begin with.
I recommend this so that we can put this on the next meeting for a vote.
Okay. Yep, that's completely fine. I, I think we're at that stage.
I was gonna suggest it too.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on that at this point? Okay.
Okay. All right, the code administration will save the concerns.
What just brought up to me that I want to talk to council, because I checked into this a little bit as well, code had some concerns as far as the, the properties that they're going into, that the city, the police are going into as well, except obviously they're, they have less protection than the police do. So I called around to see what other municipalities were doing. I talked to the Pennsylvania Municipal League to see basically what were best practices to make sure our code enforcement officers were as safe as possible. And they brought up to me, other municipalities are doing bulletproof vests, they are doing radios that are directly to the police officers, they are having, obviously, police officers at properties with them if it is needed, and then, you know, if they feel unsafe to, to leave the property and then come back with a police officer, or just have the police officer come. So there's, there was a couple of them on there that are a little bit different as far as what we, what we currently have as equipment. So I just wanted to bring this up to council for food for thought, because there are more violence being taken against code enforcement officers in municipalities around the United States. So it's something I want to make sure that we keep our code enforcement officers safe, because it is a thankless job, and quite frankly, they are the bad guy most of the time. So we want to make sure that they're as safe as possible. So I just wanted to bring that up.
If you can keep an eye out and search for grants or funding sources that would be able to supply this equipment.
Yep.
All right, Green Light Go grant.
So this grant was sent over, excuse me, by Representative Over's office for replacement or construction of traffic lights. You can also do a study for a traffic light, so I just wanted to open this up for discussion about, truthfully, I know there's different areas that we really could replace lights or do a study for lighting of that nature. I just wanted council's input as far as where we would like to hone in on, I should say.
That one is a pretty significant match, right?
It is twenty percent, I believe, but my. Let me double check real quick.
Because that would be a conversation, I think that would have to include Steve as well, and because we pulled from Liquid Fuels to do that the last couple of times.
Well, we're applying for grants for Cell Tech site.
That way.
Out of the Rack P.
Yeah.
So the Rack P, matching up with that if that's possible.
So once that, that rule comes through, once that rule comes through.
We have three intersections, Cell Tech site.
Yeah.
Front Reagan.
Yeah.
And the crossing out here at the river tracks. That's the three that are left in the city somewhere to be upgraded.
Front Reagan, there'd be no matching funds for yet though, right?
No.
Yeah.
But at least if we put it up there, and Cell Tech is more important to get that thing developed and get it off, off the idol.
What's that, that's, when does that open and close?
It closes the, January fourteenth.
We're expected to hear the answer about Rack P before then.
I really hope so. That's really up to the governor's office.
No.
Hopefully, he's gonna be in a good mood one day soon, and he's gonna award everything.
We'll wait until that and then bring it back.
Yeah.
Hope from there.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's completely fine. I can't find a match. I had it somewhere.
I like the idea of using the Rack P as a match.
That will definitely apply and put it somewhere, but it's a relocation right now. And Cell Tech's supposed to work.
Yes.
And there, there is different, I mean, there's different ways to get the match depending on how you want to go it. So, I mean, depending on what they consider, so technically, Green Light Go, I'm not one hundred percent sure if it's state funds, even though it's admitted through state, or if it's federal funds that flows through the state to, to Green. So that does matter for different things.
We use state funds to match the last one, because we use some of the money they gave us towards Reagan, to match part of Blue Green Light Go for those lots.
So it's, so it's federal dollars then, so you can match state funds. So any of the state funds that we have toward, if it's a combined project, you can use that as a matching fund.
So it's just, now we can bring it back whenever we're ready.
Yeah, I just wanted, I, I truthfully wanted, I know there's different areas that we can look, so I'm gonna see where we should try to hone in a little bit more. Excuse me. I, that's all I have on that. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Okay, Councilman Ister, the advertisement on the dashboard?
Yes, we've been working with the youth program hockey up there at the rink, and the advertisement on the dashboards, which Chris we talked earlier, make a motion that.
We can't. This is the.
Sure, thank you. Appreciate that. Discussing the fact that they want to take and market the dashboards with the advertisement and take that money and line item that for repairs at the rink.
Yeah.
On the surface itself.
Do you think you need a vote to do that?
Well, they were concerned that the money would be collected, set in the escrow account, and the council would say, oh, we're gonna use it over here.
So they just do it as an organization? Oh, I guess they need our approval to do it then, with their funds. Okay.
So anyhow, that's, if everybody's happy with that, I'll bring that back then. That was their concern.
They can start soliciting advertisements while they're ready.
Yes, they already started. We have some voters looking at the two locations in the rink right now. Of course, the next one, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sarah.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, I'm finished, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead.
All right, Green Light Press, come in.
Ricky, there she is.
Did you ask them?
Nope, go ahead.
Okay. Let me show you where you're at. Okay, so staging of the Deer Pen and the Santa House will occur on November third, as we need to do repairs to the Deer Pen, needs to have a door replaced, and the two side windows, for the request of Lake Tobias, to be closed in because the deer are nervous, you know, they have three windows that they're, you know, so we're gonna close those in. I met with Steve. His department is busy, so I'm going, that's why it needs to be staged this early, because I need to get three contractors to come out and give me estimates on getting that work done. Also, the Santa House will be staged. We're gonna be painting the Santa House. The ramp is ordered thanks to the generosity of Americas and our solicitors' law office. So that will happen. Some repairs need to be, adjustments need to be done to the Santa House to accommodate that ramp. The inside is going to be redecorated with the assistance of the Arc Susquehanna Valley Step Program, and I'm gonna go back to the Deer Pen. The Deer Pen, once we close in those windows, murals are going to be painted on each side by Sembury Arts Council. We did receive grant money. We applied, all of our grants that we applied for, we did receive thirty-two hundred dollars from the Charles and Betty Degenstein Foundation, four thousand dollars from the Charles V. Degenstein Foundation, and each of those grants, Derek, we have to get that paper so I know where those, I need to spend those dollars from, but that's awesome that we can do those repairs. Decorating of the city, I met with Steve and Craig. We coordinated the decorating. We'll have on the fifteenth through the nineteenth. They're going to get me a schedule. We've also teamed up with United Way, and local youth and their parents will be assisting us with that. Met with Carl and Tammy. We're gonna add eleven Christmas trees to the park, so I met with, with Carl as far as coordinating the electric and all those things in the park, and how are we gonna put them up safely and all that good stuff. Steve is also aware that we will need, he and I will need and Craig to do a dig paperwork, because we will need to use, to go into the ground just a little bit, nothing too deep, but Steve and Craig and I will need to handle that. The trees will be purchased by Upper Augusta Fire Company, which will assist in their fundraising efforts as well. Those trees will then be sponsored, twenty dollars a tree. Light Fest will put the lights on. I have ten businesses that will be sponsoring those trees and decorating them in the theme. The one tree, the eleventh tree, will be down by the Santa House, and we're going to be asking the children in the community to bring decorations and decorate that tree for Santa. When Santa, Mrs. Claus arrive, that tree will be decorated for them. The Santa parade will be moved to Saturday, November twenty-seventh. This was, this was like two years ago, we didn't have the parade. It was a recommendation. We met Steve, I met with Steve, he agreed. So the Santa parade is now Saturday, November twenty-seventh, 6:00 PM. Merrick Karlovic and the Clauses will be doing a tree lighting ceremony to kick off the holiday season in the city. Music will be Sembury City Band, free hot chocolate and cookies while supplies last, and the Christmas movie will be sponsored by Sembury Escherian, and that will happen in the park that evening. Santa House hours, staying to, because we're still in COVID. Last year, we had to adjust a lot as we went through. This year, we're going to stay with FaceTime and phone calls on Monday evenings only, so we can accommodate those children who may be immunocompromised, or the parents don't feel comfortable bringing them out. Last year, we did over two hundred fifty calls. So it was a service we provided, and it was utilized very well. So we're gonna continue that this year. Wednesdays and Fridays, the Santa House will be open 5:30 to 7:30. Santa's Gift of Reading is a new program that we're bringing this year. We received a thirteen hundred dollar grant from the G. Scott and Betty Bessie K. Guyer Foundation, and we also received two hundred dollars from Dr. Jessica Donofazio and her staff. So we will be purchasing books. These are reading books. These are not coloring books. It's a literacy program, and that way the children will pick their own book, and that we're helping the literacy in our community. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
What materials you need for Santa House?
Material wise.
You said it, of course, and what did you say?
The Deer Pen, Deer Pen, so I have.
I said Santa House, I'm sorry. You're just gonna put, you're gonna cover over the wire or one side of it? If you're gonna paint one, you might as well almost one.
We're gonna close it totally in with wood. So I was gonna have the contractors say what would be the best thing. Actually, we're probably gonna take the wire out on the sides because there's no need for that in there anymore, for the safety of the deer, and close them completely in. So I, you know, I didn't know if there were materials laying around that we could possibly use instead of using grant money, but I don't know.
I don't think the cost of doing your turn is that.
No.
Great. And you said about three contractors.
Well, I just always get the three estimates just because.
Well, I appreciate that, but it's your time, but if you find. Well, I can appreciate that, but it's your time, but if you find out what the materials you need, let me know, and I'll send it for you.
Okay.
Sooner the better, that way I can-
The only thing I will request is, I was gonna talk to Steve, was just about the pieces of rebar. Um, Carl said he might have that to put up through the tree to go, and I'm gonna have stands made for the tree. So it won't be, actually, nothing will be actually going in the ground, but we do need just some rebar if there's any of that laying around, if not, uh-
We're gonna take and make-
We're gonna make an S. Yes, that's what we're gonna do, and then the tree will be drilled, it'll go, the rebar will go into the S, we're not, so we're not having to go into the ground, but I want them, um, sturdy. So they're not falling on anyone. Um, so that's the plan with that, so, okay?
Okay.
Sound good?
So you need two-by-fours for the crosses?
Yeah, and Carl said there might be some of that stuff.
You only have some, or you just looked out today?
Okay, so I'll get with all the powers and we'll coordinate all that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the letter, uh, Sembury Spyglass, uh, regarding the recent information of, uh, the council trying to shut down Spyglass, I'm recommending that council, um, formalize like a letter of support for Spyglass Winery because of the economic value that their events are providing to our community, because of the amount of visitors and tourist activity that it brings, even if it's just driving through, they stop, they get gasped on the way to the events, that's, that's a boost in their economic development as they're spending their money at lower business this year. I was just wondering, if there's any other, um, questions, concerns, or maybe discussions from council, so that next council meeting, we can approve sending a letter of support regarding this. And when I talk about the letter of support, I'm not talking about a letter to send to the township saying, hey, we've been doing wrong. I'm just, I'm referencing, talking about the, the actual value that that, those events have for our community here so that we can explain to them, um, how it's affecting us positively.
Joel?
I have to stay out of it, obviously. Um, I am the attorney for Spyglass Winery, um, again, the litigation, so I don't have any comment on any of that, and it certainly wasn't my idea, but I understand what the mayor's comment.
Our concern is on the other side. And for us to find out, we let our legal counsel ask the question.
I think everyone, on a personal level, yes, does support Spyglass.
Yeah, but that just doesn't assist with, um, what they're trying to pursue with the township, but if we could formalize a letter explaining the value of their events to the city regarding the amount of people that is bringing through there, that's what I'm looking for.
I mean, I think, I mean, Kurt, I think everyone's in agreement that what they do for the community in the surrounding area is good. My only, I'm gonna say it's, I'm gonna say it's concern, but my opinion is like, we're giving support, we don't even know any of the legal things that are happening behind the scenes, like, I'm not saying we're not sending, sending a letter in that regard, but this say, you know, I don't know, I'm playing devil's advocate here, like, to say something comes back or they are doing something illegal, but we're saying, oh, we support them for what they're doing. So, I mean, yes, they do bring a lot of things to the area, but not knowing what's happening on the legal end of it, that's just my opinion, maybe we should, yes, we know they bring a lot of stuff to the area, but legally speaking, we don't know what's happening, and by giving support, when they maybe do something illegally, I'm not saying they are.
Okay, so my, my question is, what about these other letters of support that we've, we've written for other businesses? We don't know exactly if they're providing a legal business service.
Like, what was another example do you have that we gave a letter of support during a litigation fight?
We've gendered it out.
What's another municipality?
Oh, let me, let me ask a question.
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Open end, yes or no?
Okay. If you get to that.
Is it more advantageous for the city to stay neutral since there's litigation already started in this situation?
If you get to that, after you're allowed to say probably.
Well, no, we'll be working with Rockefeller Township also if we do any expansion in our fire end of it, uh, place and regionalizing and stuff like that, so we're going to have to work with them sometime along the down the road.
Well, we're just discussing, so we can find out if we have any exposure by next meeting, cause we're gonna decide in the identity.
And from, from the person who was elected PR officer, whatever my title was on that one, um, I get, I get the mayor's point that we're not talking about, the letter of support is not toward that specific. We are saying what the municipality is doing is wrong. That being said, in my opinion, that's not going to be how it's taken when we do a letter of support during this time. It's gonna be that we support, yes, Spyglass and what they're doing, but we don't agree with what Rockefeller Township's doing. And without, to Councilman Roche's point, not knowing exactly what's going on behind the scenes, again, don't know if they're, don't, not saying that they're doing anything wrong, but-
It's a shame that we're not willing to stand up and support a business that's supporting the city.
But they're, I mean, Kurt-
Just, just a great discussion.
Well, besides, so we'll move on to the, uh, further discussions. We're not going to be, um, between this, we'll discuss it at another, um, council.
But you can, you can put it on the agenda, the vote, I mean, this is a discussion, I just gave my opinion, which I impeded to an hour.
Well, I think we ought to find out if any other communities are going.
Yeah.
As a matter of another community sends one or not, I'm, what we need to do is lead by example and just discuss the positive and aspects that that organization has upon the city, if that organization is actually deemed being shut down and all those events leave this area, that would be detrimental for somewhere.
Obviously, there are some people-
Mayor, so with that statement, then we are writing the letter of support because of what they're doing. So it would be directly to do with the litigation then.
And we could, we could highly recommend them to review their current zoning ordinances.
Well, 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 ma- ma- mayor, I would like to point out, and again, not saying they're doing anything wrong, however, if it ever came out that something was, some, ma- ma- No, 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 it's, it's, it's making sure that we have no exposure on our end, because if we do a letter of support and it ever came out that something was wrong, because we don't know the details, we just gave a letter of support to a business that could, that, that, that could, that could be doing something wrong, that they're not-
For over twenty years.
Let's move on, yeah. Let's move on. Then bring it up to vote next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll bring it up to vote so they can see who supports the businesses or not.
Okay.
Okay. Private grants and city trust funds, I have questions regarding this because it seems like every year there's questions that are raised between private grants and city trust funds that are in the city financial lines, okay? Questions are, why are we not utilizing the private grants or city trust funds that have been donated, provided to a city for certain reasons, okay? For example, we have funding sitting in a small grants line item for, um, for the skate park on Fourth Street, okay? Why are we not using any of that funding to make the repairs? What is it? The repairs to the skate park, and we're just using general budget for, you know, these different parks that we classify under the small grants or trust funds.
I don't know, have, have, have we done, are they, are they, I don't even know if they're being used. Or do you want to, you want them to be used for something specific? Is that what you're saying?
I wanna know why are we not utilizing the grants and small trust funds that the city is responsible for, from what they were actually provided to the city? What I know, taking notice, it just seems like we're just sitting, letting it sit in the bank to collect interest on it instead of utilizing it for the purpose that it was provided to the city for.
Can you help me out with, what's the skate park?
For example, the skate park on Fourth Street, that's just a quick example.
Okay.
I, me and June, I brought forth to the council that there was severe repairs that needed to be done. We have a small grants line item for that, why haven't we not made the repairs to that park?
We've been trying to find a contractor that will show up and do the work. Do you have any suggestions?
There's, there's plenty of contractors on our, our license list that we could probably contact since we have the boards to replace, and just hire them to replace the boards.
We'll pick one up, next council meeting.
Okay, but that doesn't answer the question regarding the small grants. Where is it complete with, with all these grants and trusts that the city has?
In the treasurer's office. So you're, are you asking why we don't use them, you're asking where the list is, what's your exact question?
Why are we not utilizing these funds and we're just continuously going to take out in the general budget for the maintenance and overall cost of, I mean, the same projects that we fall under those funds?
Well, we- Mayor, so next council meeting, I'll get a list of what's, what grants are listed you're referring to, and then we'll go over each one.
Okay.
Is there something in particular other than Wood Force Street?
I, I, discussing the, the grant portion of this and the trust funds that it seems responsible for, making sure that those finances are used for the first ever-
Wolf's offender.
Next one, Councilman Recker, the revocation of the revocable trust agreement.
Right now, we have, I believe, it's two separate accounts in a revocable, revocable bank trust with, um, Northern National. Um, Councilman Easter and Councilor, uh, Treasurer Tru, met with Julie Raiki of, uh, North Denver National Bank, and she recommended that we get rid of this trust agreement, put the money into one account, same thing, a revocable trust account, and she believes that we can, she can get us more money, more interest, doing it that way.
Okay, so this, this, this specific trust here, what are these funds supposed to be utilized for?
Sembury celebration.
Sembury celebration.
And they're telling me Sembury celebration has a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars market value.
Yes, we're very conservative, we save our money.
And it's all private, I've asked about that a bunch of times. I always get the same answer, consistent. It's always towards that, and then it goes towards fireworks.
This year, next year for the celebrations, nice piece of that will be used towards the fireworks and other activity for the children. We take the interest off, we never like to touch the principal, so it's there for the future.
Am I making a motion?
We've worked hard to get that money, and some of us donated to there, and we come up with a hundred thousand so we can take, figuring five percent, which would be five thousand dollars a year roughly, and utilize it for the fireworks every year.
What did she want to do, Rick? Take it from revocable trust to move it to an irrevocable trust?
I think we have two different ones, right? And the recommendation was that they, they get the two and make one, and with the opportunity of making more money.
What was, Chris, they changed the type of, uh, grant was, not the grant, but, uh, trust, so it gives them more latitude to make better investments with it.
Maybe become a little more aggressive with the investments and stuff.
The possibility of probably losing some if, if they do, um, manage this, correct?
That's the risk of all.
That's the risk of all investments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, city's New Year's Eve is just on as a discussion because there's no volunteers currently for this, and the two hundred computers have a, um, an event for selling tickets, uh, to raise money, fifty. Any discussions regarding New Year's Eve, because there's no plans to bring the whole about, there's no plans for fireworks, celebration, so.
But that was your thing? That was your event?
So you're saying, so you're saying you're not gonna do it?
No, I'm just saying there's, there's no assistance with this, so right now, there is no New Year's Eve city.
So what's, so what was your plan-
That was why I-
To have the event? What, what was your plan, you could get any help for, I guess? What was-
There's private events that are occurring this year, multiple kind of events, and one of the main events is a city subcommittee that, which is the two-hundred-and-fiftieth, which is raising funds for the city's two-hundred-and-fiftieth celebration for the following year.
I, I understand that, you're saying there's no volunteers for the event, for the city. I'm asking you, what event did you plan that you put-
That's saying, all right, Councilman Roche's.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Um, the event, there's no volunteers, because the volunteers are taken up at the other events.
Okay, I, I understand what you're saying.
So what I'm saying is currently there's no city-sponsored New Year's Eve celebration that will be occurring for the public. Uh, that someone else here has an idea.
That's why, I gave it to the city, yeah, I mean, that was the same problem that I ran into years ago, and that's why I got given to the city. I mean, it's recurring, that's why you said you wanted it at that point. So if you're not planning anything, then nothing's being planned.
Okay, well, right now, there is no city-sponsored New Year's Eve celebration being planned.
Okay.
Councilman Roche's have the policy.
So, I, whenever we talked about the COVID policy last, a few of the employees, not a few, we'll say multiple employees came to me. They don't have an issue with the personal day or anything like that, the issue that they had was whether they're vaccinated or not, and if they get sent home to be quarantined. They felt it wasn't fair to them if the city sends, to say they have no symptoms and they do not have their vaccine, they feel it's not fair, until they get their test, they don't feel it's not fair to them that they have to use their personal time, even though they are not sick. I said that-
And they should, not to, they accept the vaccination, so they place themselves at a higher risk for infection than serious illness.
I'm just, I'm just bringing their concern, I'm not, I'm not arguing about what the science says behind, I'm just saying they didn't think-
Well, or no, but I'm arguing on the fact of the city that it is fair, they chose not to accept the vaccination, so they're choosing to possibly receive a severe reaction from the virus.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not arguing either, I'm just bringing their concern to the council, I'm not arguing, saying we're right, they're wrong, but I'm just saying, they didn't feel it was fair that they need to use their time, even if they are asymptomatic, they have no symptoms and they're being sent home, they use their sick time, and when they get, whether or not they have it or not, I'm just saying that was their concern.
Joel, can we, can we make them use their sick time if they were sent home because they were exposed and-
Because the city sent them home.
And they were not, and were not vaccinated.
You're asking me legally?
Yes.
Yes.
What it was, the whole time, the government was giving you paperwork, they're not giving you paperwork.
So that-
Okay, that's fine, like, besides, I was just bringing the concern from the employees, that's all I was doing, I'm not arguing whether we should change it. And I already talked about the meters in the budget, so I'm good with that.
All right, and the upstairs hallway thinks that city hall is created for the fourth floor. Julie, what's up, is that start?
Um, eleven to three.
All right, um, okay, training for the city is October thirtieth from six to eight P M. And you're receiving letters of interest for twenty-twenty-two board appointments, you need the board story?
You should have a sheet of the name, because I don't have it.
All right, who has lists available, can you read it up?
Yeah, I got it, I got it. Yep, we're looking for a civil service board member for a three-year term, a zoning board member for a three-year term, municipal authority board for a five-year term, a recreation board for a four-year term, and a board of appeals for a three-year term.
And on the authority, they're doing an interview with a gentleman from town here, I was told today, so, you know, I need, so.
All right, next council meeting is November eighth at six fifteen P M, and city hall, are there any public comments at this time? Oh, and I see there's a pre-submitted one, Sembury Rose.
Um, no, they canceled, they called and canceled, they weren't prepared.
Oh, okay, all right, is there any public comments at this time?
There's a couple, Demos.
All right, so since I can't see everybody, um-
Just come up and state your name and your municipality and your issue.
Mr. Mayor, what surprise to see you on the television, I don't believe that, you saw me?
Yeah, I see you.
You see me, all right?
I see you.
I was in the commissioner's office last time, and the commissioner, you tell me, for the, for the taxes. You remember?
Yeah, you, you go visit the commissioners.
And I give it, and I give it to the crook and report the police, and you know what, uh, what the commissioner said to me, to call the attorney general. You gonna help me to call the attorney general, and I go personal over there to sort the, to sort the report, the police, they made it. You gonna do that or afraid? And he got farther, you know, I don't know, this, making you afraid, or the customer afraid to, to investigate the, what's going on in here with the broken, uh, houses and, and everything, and police don't do nothing? You gonna help me to call the attorney general together, and I go personal over there? You gonna say anything?
Maybe you were having to do that on your-
We have a meeting, we have a meeting on April twenty-three, okay? Or you did it with a, with a, a cop making that crook a report? You taking, you taking any, any measure to punish that cop? Answer to me!
Mr. Demos, this isn't a question and answer session. This isn't a question and answer session, sir, we'd only answer your questions.
Oh, you know, answer.
No, it's just, it's just, Demos is-
Especially when you threaten litigation against us. What you have-
The attorney general did nothing about the cops would make them report, I know reported that to the attorney general. I want the mayor to call the attorney general together, and I go personal over there at the Metro, Metro Street to spoke to the attorney general.
And your wishes are noted.
But I need, I need to be helped by the mayor.
Your wishes are noted, sir.
Mayor can meet with you or set up a time, well, he can help you to do what you need to be helped with doing.
Well, only if the mayor wants to do this-
Yes.
And deems it necessary. Well, only if the mayor wants to do this and deems it necessary. We don't think anybody's crooked, sir.
What's gonna happen here, we got going, nor, or they're gonna be chaos in the, in the Southsburg?
I don't understand what he said.
The newspaper, they're not want to put it in the Chinese about what happened in Chinese store. Where am I? When I put incorrect the flag in purpose, and I put the sign of the no more bullshit twenty twenty for the, for the president, for the President Trump, the newspaper, he called me, but no fun be, but they put a newspaper. Now, they call it Chinese, they not, the Chinese don't spoke, and they not put a newspaper, why?
Sure, that doesn't.
Without two different, two different stories.
That has nothing to do with the city. That has nothing to do with the city, that's your.
I want to know, I haven't.
Then go meet with the newspaper.
Chief, chief here with the, with editor and the, and the daily, and the, and the toilet arm, no, daily arm, door.
Enough, we've heard enough, you're right, sir, thank you.
Mr. Demos, unfortunately, your three minutes are up. If you want to contact the Attorney General, you can do so on your own, occur.
If the police is crooked, you not take responsibility?
Your public comment session has ended at this time. If you would like to contact, um, I'm sure we'll be able to provide you the contact information.
You want, I mean, I'm meeting you to talk to you, you, you make an, you make an meeting? You make an appointment to talk to you?
Mr. Demos.
And we call the attorney general over there. And I go personal, you know, my English, I'm not afraid to speak, I don't speak very well English. But I'm not afraid to express my feeling what happened in the town in here and all, all, all over.
Okay.
You the mayor of the town, you supposed to know what the hell is going on in here, right?
Enough, we've heard enough, sir, no more.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other audience comments to mind?
Yep, in the back.
Okay, please stand, don't you mind, we'll analyze your residence.
Yes, Ed and Summat?
You're up, yeah.
We have the recycling, concerned about the construction going on up there. It's, uh, you can't get trucks in there now, that's one problem. Because they were blocking us off with pump shots, which I believe that's corrected now. But the other problem is gonna be, it was just part of tonight, I noticed. When they go and do the other side of the street.
Sewer cycle.
Yeah, and they're not gonna pave nothing there. Then they're gonna start going down the street, right, am I correct?
They're, they're working on the storm on your side right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Once it come down, there's the junction box goes right there around Second, your second, the step.
Yeah, yeah.
After that's installed, they were discussing it today, they're gonna go past that now or not? Because that would get closer into the intersection, most likely not. We'll know more, I don't know if they're gonna work tomorrow because of the rain. Of course, the Thursday, this Thursday, we'll have another meeting, okay? That's the storm side, they're gonna switch over and start on Front Street with the sewer as soon as they get the pipe, okay? They have the inlets, I mean, the van holes, which were shipped in, I think they have at least three or four. They'll start, Front Street work the way down, same things.
Well, my question, my question's gonna be, when they get that done, are they gonna start going in front of the brass key then?
No, 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 they're gonna be working, the project area is from Second to Front at the present time. All season long.
But that'll be paved after that part done.
Well, they'll be working all, because remember after the sewer, okay, then they have a water line there.
I think they're asking, is it, are they gonna be, is that portion gonna be open before they shut down the second portion, so that entire rig is, it's gonna shut down?
This, this is our issue.
Because you can't get trucks in there.
Because if you close off that entrance to the brass key parking lot, you're shutting us down completely, we can't make a living.
No, there's.
You mean towards the underpack side, like, yeah, where that food, near the food truck is? That's not gonna be shut down, that's what he's saying.
Okay, that was, that was the main question.
Not this year.
No, but I'm saying.
Not, I mean, next year, that's.
No, but they wanna know if.
We won't have layout.
But what I wanna know, is that's gonna be paved, the section they're doing now?
Here's what we're gonna.
Is that gonna be paved when they start the other section? Because if it isn't, they're shutting us down.
You mean, are they gonna reopen that section before they move to the next section?
Yes.
Yeah, that was part of the.
When we shut down the parking lot where the food stand is, they'll have your Second Street open.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm gonna do.
Because we need to, we need a way to getting out of there.
Right.
Yeah, but that's what's all.
We need board coordination on the gates. So I know they come, on the one weekend, we weren't prepared for you, okay?
Yes, we had to cancel a truck at the last minute. And then we had to cancel that same truck three days later because they were bullheaded and put their damn dumb trucks back where they weren't supposed to be.
Okay, we have that all worked out.
Yes, I think, I think.
All right, okay.
I think we.
It's very frustrating, though, let me tell you. After thirty years in there and just minding our own business, it's tough.
He, he got brought short.
Hey, I've been calling a lot worse.
He needed a.
All righty, thank you.
Okay, go thank you.
Any other audience comments, sir?
Actually.
Hi, Mr. Rob.
Just will they be at some point shutting down that Second Street intersection?
Yes.
And how long will that last? Well, I'm just trying to figure out, because we may still be taking stuff in and out of that building. And I only have, I can only make a left out of the parking lot, so I'm, with tractor trailers.
Right.
I might be able to get them to swing up through the far side of the playground, but I'm not sure.
When we get to that point, sir, we'll sit down, walk it, and make modifications so we can get in and out.
Okay.
That's not gonna be early until, probably.
Till next year.
It's gonna be in March, because they can't repave the, the other part until at least March. Because like, we keep it whole.
Okay, just keep me in the loop.
We'll do it.